Twenty-one regular board meeting to order at six o'clock PM. Our invocation will be led by Tucker Green. Would you all please rise?
Good evening, my friend. Dear Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve our students and serve our community. We ask that you give us more wisdom and guidance to go in the way you'd see fit, that we would do business in the best interest of our students. Lord, we ask that you be with every home here. Go with us and be with us. Lord, we also ask that you look after and bless a dear member of our team and her family, Ms. Jill Libertor, who has suffered a very tragic medical accident yesterday. And we pray that you would look after her and heal her and be with her family during this very difficult time. All these things we ask of you. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing as Mr. Tommy Gartrill leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do, Madam Chair. I would ask that we add an amendment to the agenda to recognize Ms. Emma Long, our state FFA president. I would request that we name item six E, Emma Long's recognition. And I would recommend that item E on the current agenda move to item F. And that item F on the current agenda move to item G. And item G would move to item H.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the requested recognition as item six E?
I like the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, five oh. The motion passed unanimously. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The agenda has been approved. The next item is item five, public participation. We have three requests for public participation tonight. Mr. Brian Rittenberry, Dr. Rick Townsend, and Mr. Steve Lau. I will read the school board policy on public participation. Afterward, we will begin with Mr. Brian Rittenberry, then Dr. Rick Townsend, and then Mr. Steve Lau. Board policy, B C B I, public participation in board meetings. Meetings of the Board of Education are structured to allow the board to conduct its public business. Meetings of the board are open to the public but are not to be confused with public forums. When time permits, the Board of Education is a matter of general operating procedure, offers an opportunity for legal residents of Pickens County to address the board in open session. The following rules shall be adhered to. To be placed on the agenda, a citizen must request to appear before the board in writing at least five days prior to the regular monthly meeting of the board. The request must state clearly the topic or issue to be addressed. Each citizen whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make their comments, but the total time allotted to citizen participation will be limited to twenty minutes. Citizens may reduce additional concerns into writing and submit to the Board of Education if five minutes does not provide sufficient time. Where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the board reserves the right to further limit discussions should they become repetitive. While citizens may use their allotted time to take serious issue with board decisions, the board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual board members or board employees. When issues arise that stimulate high community interests, the board may schedule special meetings specifically to invite public comment. In those circumstances, the board will establish special guidelines for participation. The board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentations, but will take these comments and questions under advisement. Mr. Rittenberry?
I'd like to defer to Dr. Townsend first, please. He, uh...
Misses Perdant?
People want to hear from him.
Pardon me? Okay. All right? If that's all right with you two, that's fine.
Good evening. I want to thank you for some of the positive initiatives we've had during my tenure superintendent. In your March fifteenth response to Saks, you highlighted Pearson, our LMS, which is our H-Learning, our COVID Return to School Plan. I think everyone knows by my termination behind closed doors Friday, January fifteenth, but Mr. Landrum told me that I was terminated and was asked to clean out my office, return my truck, turn in my electronics by five PM Sunday. My computer rights, email account were shut down after the meeting. Now, earlier that week, of course, Mr. Young and Mr. Landrum, my CFO, asked about my buyouts. I appreciated the community's response and felt supported that entire time. Once the contract was honored in full, I had no intention to speak at a board meeting. My plan was to continue to be part of this great community and live here full-time or possibly part-time, depending if we moved south or my job situation. However, due to the information that has recently come out, specifically the text and Mr. Young's comments in the paper, I felt compelled to speak tonight. As I read through the text, I became extremely disappointed and shocked that the three board members of my assistant superintendent appeared to be part of a grand scheme. I remember the press release that you released on February twenty-third where we part ways amicably. Yes, after this statement, I was ready to move on because I understand board politics at times and the constitutional right to hire and fire superintendent. Totally understand that. However, that's if it's handled professionally and ethically. This is not about Rick Townsend now. It's much bigger. As a community member and a professional educator, I'm appalled by what I saw in the text. Read the text. I'm shocked at the remarks that Mr. Young made in the recent newspaper article comparing to his Saks response on March fifteenth. Compare it. Pull out the two. Which of the statements are true? Are the texts as disturbing as they appear? I believe so. Why didn't Mr. Holland call me after the first board meeting and apologize about the plan to get rid of me the first of the year? Mr. Holland said he prayed to Jesus, could not do this to me anymore. Mr. Holland, what changed your mind? Mr. Young wrote how the board worked cohesively and showed harmony as a group in his letter to Saks. Is this true? Why did Sue think board members, Green and Ennis, made a mistake by appointing Mr. Holland? What was the plan in January? Mr. Young was never my liaison for the board. Text shows Finley and Young violating the chain of command. Tony states the staff does not want to be present at the board meeting and is encouraging my staff to say positive things to my face. Does Mr. Young and Finley's staff should culture fear and possibly intimidation by these actions? Sue refers to me and states he has no idea of the underground network we have... dot, dot, dot. Finish the quote. Is this professional? Is this undermining the authority of the superintendent? Another text, Tony states, it's only a couple of weeks until January. Sue states, I know, but I'm so excited, I hate to wait. As for Tommy, I hate to tell him too much for fear he'll tell Tucker or RT. Is this board harmony or working as a cohesive group? Sue states, even without posting a notice, if Aaron's ready, we could let RT know it's time to start packing. Again, this is speaking to Tony Young, who reports to me, not a board member. Tony responds, if Aaron will, Aaron will go along, Phil can start negotiating. Is this professional or ethical? Talking about the article, "The Great Smear Campaign," in the Pickens Progress, April twenty-ninth. Was Mr. Young truthful in his quote, paragraph four, denies the fact that there was a coordinated effort to bring Dr. Wilson back? Review the text. Was Mr. Young truthful in paragraph six, where he thought he denied working behind my back and that he involved in any way in the plot to bring back Carl Wilson? Review the text. Mr. Young claims in paragraph seven to eight that I signed to be board liaison. That's not correct. I confirm with this to Mr. Gartrill and Mr. Young. Young was never invited into the text session. Did Mr. Young break my authority and break the chain of command on a consistent basis? Review the texts. Paragraph eighteen nineteen, does Young contradict the response to Saks about harmony and cooperation with others? Reps says the Hatfields and McCoys. Review the text. It was alluded, there weren't many qualified people in Pickens County, Pickens County school system to be superintendent. There are quite a few admin here have a great amount of experience. It's a good staff. It's a good crew. It's a great community. I was proud to be part of it and thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, in my words from the March Board of Education meeting, I warned the Queen and frivolous two that I, along with many others, would from then on scrutinize every single move that you all made. Yet little any of us knew that Tony Young was also involved. Thank you, Sue, for confirming that there was an underground network. We're so glad that we know that now. Though our questions have yet to be clearly answered about it, I can assure you all, we will find out. By the way, we most certainly do agree that the text messages are so much better than whispers and sneaky notes. Now, the fact that Sue was allowed to provide text messages to Impact Pickens solely upon her own discretion shows that Philip Landrum, again, is also involved. There should have been oversight, but since there wasn't, one can only question if Sue were willing to send those despicable messages that she did. Just what exactly did she not send? Second, the question still remains regarding the firing of Dr. Townsend. If what he did, assuming that he did anything wrong whatsoever, was so reprehensible that he had to go and you had to piss away our tax money the way you did? Why did you not stand by your guns and get rid of him on Monday, January the eighteenth, rather than wait five weeks? It's apparently because we're spineless and we can't stand up for what we believe in, which is what our leadership is supposed to do. In a message to me, Sue clearly stated, and I'll be glad to show anybody that asks, that they were going to meet on Monday, the eighteenth, to further find just cause. You want to know why they were going to meet? Because there were none. There was none. It was purely personal. Otherwise, do we make it standard practice to not give an evaluation to an employee paying a hundred thousand dollars a year? Is that standard? Because every other faculty member in this school has an evaluation. If I were them, I'd be questioning why you're going to evaluate me and not everybody. As for the text messages and those behaviors, it's blatantly obvious that the Queen and the frivolous two alongside Mr. Tommy Young have nothing but total and absolute disregard for the community that we have and the lack of qualities that the people in our community expect from their leadership. And I know this because they've told me so. Many of them, lots of them, and almost every place I go to in Pickens County, they're all saying the same thing. They also asked me to bring attention to the fact that as the Board of Education in Pickens County, your job is to govern the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And rather than reprimand Tony Young for his actions and yours, everybody joined in. The proof is in the text. How disgusting can we get and then let the taxpayers pick the tab? Right?
Right.
You've all proven your... Oh, we could also talk about coercing employees to meet with board members. And I'm not going to call a name, but we all seen the text and we all know who it involved. You've all three proven yourself as failed leaders in our community, and Tony Young has to. The people of our Grand County now know exactly where each of your intentions lie. They are not with self, they are not with surface, they are with self, which is by definition what you're elected for, self-public servant. Contrary to what you all believe, Sue, you are not the Queen, you're a public servant. So were you, Mr. Holland and Mr. Smith, Mr. Green, Mr. Gartrill. Thankfully, Tucker and Tommy remember that. I'll also note that Tony's not the grand poobah. He's the assistant super... He is the superintendent now that is overseen by our Board of Education. And if it's not right now, I can promise you it will be real soon, that if you don't step down, you'll be gone because we're going to find new people to take these spots and get you out of here too. I'll also note to everybody that's watching that Impact Pickens made an open records request to obtain the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-page rebuttal that was promised to you in the Pickens County Progress. And Philip Landrum, citing attorney-client privilege, declined that request. I have it right here with me?
Really?
He sure did.
Well, what I think...
So yet another lie to the stakeholders of our county.
Yeah.
Why are you hiding? What are you hiding? That's the question. So with that said, y'all make me sick to my absolute core. And I want to reiterate my call for the wannabe Queen, Sue, Steve, Aaron, and the grand poobah himself, Tony. And for the love of God and all thanks holy, take Philip Landrum when you walk out.
We spoke absolutely.
As you can see tonight, we are committed to hold you accountable. You guys have no idea the monetary and other support we have in the community. We can't go anywhere without someone approaching us to show their support. Since being here in February, this revelation of text confirmed our suspicions and more. You, the three board members, conspired to get rid of Dr. Townsend with the help of our now superintendent, Tony Young. I won't forget the night we first sat down looking through these texts. I was disgusted with the behavior I saw, and that is the response we've heard from so many after we brought them to light. Mr. Young and Mr. Landrum, you tried to paint it as a smear campaign through your statements in the Progress a couple of weeks ago. I found that laughable, and so did many others. We simply presented the texts and allowed them to speak for themselves. It continues to amaze myself and others how stupid you must think we all are, that you can somehow spin these into something other than what they are. This is not a smear campaign, but rather an accountability campaign. Your treatment of Dr. Townsend and disregard for our tax dollars was bad enough, but this kind of behavior makes you completely unfit to lead our children. This is behavior we certainly would not tolerate from them. You should be serving as a good role model for our children and leaders that we can be proud of, but that is impossible with this kind of behavior. Mr. Landrum, myself and our community have questions for you. You are the attorney for the entire board as a whole. How is it that you went with the assistant superintendent to talk to the CFO about conditions of a buyout for Dr. Townsend before that fateful Friday? On whose authority did you go and why was the assistant superintendent involved? I don't believe Mr. Green or Mr. Gartrill knew anything about this because they were not part of this nefarious plot. And yet, you were working in conjunction with Mistress Finley to carry this out. Furthermore, on the Friday, Dr. Townsend was terminated, and there is no doubt that is what occurred by actions taken in Dr. Townsend's own testimony. You were not advising the board against this illegal action in executive session, but you were complicit in it. You actually delivered the message. Please tell me how you were serving the best interests of our community. We have board members committing multiple violations, and you are not advising against it, but rather complicit in it. These are our schools. These are our kids. We no longer want you leading our children. We have lost trust in you. I'm calling on all four of you, Mr. Holland, Ms. Finley, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Young, all to resign. That is the right thing to do. We simply want you to step down and bring this to an end. However, rest assured, my resolve and that of this community is strong. We will continue to pursue every legal and ethical means to see you resign or remove. We will not quit. I fear you do not... I fear for you. If you do not step down, the results may be much worse for you as you continue to pursue your remo... as we continue to pursue your removal. You have been warned. If you don't step down, then we're not responsible for the consequences. You will have brought these on yourselves as we've asked at every point along the way for you to resign. Because we have lost trust in you, please know that every move you make is being scrutinized. We have eyes everywhere watching your every move. Tony, Philip, that is what we were known as in nineteen eighty-five, and I was known as Stevie. Almost thirty-six years ago, we walked across a dark stage to receive our diplomas from Pickens High School. There were bad thunderstorms that evening, and our ceremony was moved to the old gym where the power went out. Since that time, Wendy and I had our adopted son, Chris Tucker, graduate PHS, and our second son, Tucker, will graduate next week. Our daughter, Isabella, is finishing up her freshman year at PHF, PHS. Myself and others love our schools. I served as chaplain for our varsity basketball teams for ten years, and have continued to love and serve kids in our community in a variety of ways, both inside and outside of the school system. I'm trying to figure out what has happened to both of you, because clearly you don't share this love for our schools and community. You were serving your own interests. All five of you are now bringing a different kind of darkness to our school system through your unethical and immoral actions. But you know what? You all have a greater problem than myself or our community aligned against these actions. I don't believe in karma, rather I believe in a just and a holy God. And he is a problem for each one of you. We only were able to see a fraction of your behaviors through these texts, but he has seen it all, and he knows the complete truth. You cannot treat people this way and get away with it. You may spin and be like...
Thank you, Mr. Lau.
However, you won't get away.
Thank you, Mr. Lau.
No, you let me finish. I've heard enough from you. However, if you don't remove this, justice is going to be served, guys.
Our next item is recognitions. The first one is our state winner. And to have, I don't know what the number is right now as far as people in and people out, but we have a whole lot of young people out here and parents that want to come in and see their children be recognized. Is there a number?
There's no magnets.
Pardon me?
There are no magnets.
No? As far as number of people we have in this room?
We're still following the DPH guidance in terms of how many people in the room. Parents can come in as we recognize if they would like to.
Okay. All right. The first one is the state winner in one act play writing, and Ms. Destiny Shope will let us know about that. Thank you so much.
It is my pleasure this evening to recognize an outstanding PHS senior, Rose Finney. Rose recently won first place in the Georgia High School Dramatic Writing Screenwriting Awards. Her screenplay is entitled "On Mayview Bridge." During awards ceremony on April seventeenth, she watched... she was awarded a one thousand dollar scholarship, and her screenplay was read aloud live on Zoom by professional actors from the Screen Actors Guild. Rose's screenplay was written as part of the Dramatic Writing for Film Television and Theatre One class at PHS. This is an English language arts course that also gives students a credit in fine arts. The course helps to prepare students for jobs in content creation. In addition to learning about the massive billion-dollar film industry, students write both a ten-minute play and a fifteen-minute screenplay. This is the second award that has been won by a PHS dramatic writing student. Congratulations to Rose Finney.
Good evening. For many years, Pickens County School District has recognized a Teacher of the Year for each school. This past Monday evening, we were able to celebrate this career accomplishment with our school winners and their families that have been held at Chattahoochee Technical College. At this time, I would like to also thank our many business partners who graciously provided gifts for these individuals. I would like to ask each teacher to come forward as I read a little bit about them. Ms. Stephanie Grisham is representing Harmony Elementary School. Ms. Grisham is a K-four Special Education teacher at Harmony Elementary. She currently teaches the Emotional Behavioral Disorder Program. She received her Bachelor of Arts from King College, Masters of Education from North Georgia College, and Education Specialist from Piedmont College. She has been an elementary Special Education teacher for twenty-four years. Twenty-two of those years have been dedicated to Pickens County. Prior to teaching, she was a paraprofessional at Indian Paintbrush Elementary in Laramie, Wyoming. It was this experience that inspired her to pursue education as a career. Stephanie has a love for teaching and for her students that is evident in her enthusiasm and the positive learning environment she creates for her students. Mrs. Grisham was also named Pickens County Teacher of the Year in two thousand and four. The next teacher I'd like to recognize is Ms. Abby Tippin, representing Hill City Elementary. Ms. Tippin is a first-grade teacher at Hill City, where she teaches Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science to her Hill City Hawks. She received a Bachelor of Science from Kennesaw State University. In two thousand and fourteen, she joined Pickens County School District as one of its first Georgia Lottery pre-K teachers at Hill City. Since that time, she has taught traditional kindergarten, virtual kindergarten, and first grade. Abby encourages others to find their strength and use it. She suggests identifying what you enjoy doing and then use self-reflection to hone in on your personal strengths and weaknesses. She says her motivation to teach comes when the really hard skill finally clicks with a student and their eyes light up. The next student I'd like... the next teacher I would like to recognize this evening is Ms. Jessica Bryan, representing Tate Elementary School. Ms. Bryan teaches kindergarten and is in her ninth year of teaching. She's taught Georgia pre-K kindergarten and first grade during her career. She has earned a Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education along with a Masters of Arts in Early Childhood Education along... I'm sorry. At the present time, she is working toward her Education Specialist degree. She believes in building a strong classroom community with her students and where students learn not only academics, but they also learn skills to help them as they begin working with others and become part of a diverse group of new friends. Jessica enjoys opportunities to celebrate similarities and differences with her students. She often uses literature as a way to expose students to places around the state and country. As a teacher, her goal is to provide learning opportunities that prepare students for real-life experiences. Congratulations, Jessica. The next teacher I'd like to recognize is Ms. Aileen Steinhauer from Jasper Middle School. Ms. Steinhauer is a fifth and sixth-grade Language Arts teacher at Jasper Middle School. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Journalism and Mass Communications from the University of South Carolina and a Master of Education in College Student Affairs Administration from the University of Georgia. Aileen believes that education is about holding students to high expectations and reaching each student where he or she is academically. In order to provide this environment of individualized... In order to provide this environment of individualized learning, lessons need to focus on providing opportunities for all students to grow and find success. She instills a practice of problem-solving in her students because this is a skill that can be applied to all areas of life. Through the guidance of the Student Government Group at JMS, she is able to work with students in developing needed skills so they can become effective leaders within their school community and our community at large. Congratulations, Ms. Steinhauer. Next, we will recognize Pickens Junior High School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Laurie Geltzer. Ms. Geltzer received her Bachelor's in Science Education and Special Education from the State University of New York at Genesee.
Genesee.
Genesee. Sorry about that. Upon her graduation, she began a diverse career in the field of special education. Ms. Geltzer has taught New Hampshire, New York, and Georgia during her 35-year adventure in education. In an effort to provide unique opportunities for her students, she worked with them to create a coffee café. In the classroom, a vintage-style coffee shop exists, and on Fridays, staff come in and visit with the students while enjoying a cup of coffee. The students take turns filling the different jobs within the coffee shop. This opportunity has helped to improve their work and social interaction skills. Each week, the coffee café even recognizes and employs the week. And I understand that now the coffee café is mobile, right? Yeah?
They're making deliveries.
Yes, they're making deliveries. Laurie believes the real-life skills that the students acquire in her class will help open doors to a successful future. Congratulations, Ms. Geltzer. The next teacher I would like to recognize is Mrs. Carrie Stevens, Pickens High School Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Stevens received a Bachelor of Science in Marketing from Kennesaw State University and received her Ad-Ahn Teaching Certification from Bernal University. She later returned to Bernal University and went on to earn a Master's of Education degree. She teaches math and finds that students often say they can't do math, usually because they lack self-confidence. Ms. Stevens does not allow her students to use that excuse, but guides them to say, "I don't get it yet." With a belief that everyone can do math, she provides encouragement and guidance as they navigate the world of mathematics. Carrie enjoys sharing her creative ways to remember math concepts with her students. She invites them to also share their own ideas with their peers. It is important for students to connect the math concepts they are learning to the real world. Whether they are a consumer making a purchase or working as an employee in banking or construction, solid math skills are essential. Mrs. Stevens was also named Pickens County Teacher of the Year in 2007, and she was selected as the 2021-22 Pickens County Teacher of the Year and will go on to compete for Miss Georgia, uh, Miss Georgia. Georgia Teacher of the Year for 2023. So congratulations to Mrs. Stevens. Congratulations to all of our teachers. Thank you for doing a great job for our students each and every day. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. As the next group comes up, we've got Star Student Recognitions from Mr. Chris Wallace, Principal of High School.
Thank you, Board Chair, Board members, Mr. Young. It's my honor to be here this evening and present to you guys and our community the Star Students and Teachers for the Class of 2021. These students are recognized as star finalists based on their SAT scores. Each year, we work with the Optum Club of Jasper, who is the local sponsor of this program, to ensure that they are properly honored. A dinner and a banquet were held a couple weeks ago where we had each student and their families, as well as these teachers that we will recognize tonight. And each student gets the opportunity to pick a teacher who has been impactful on their educational journey. I just want to take a minute to thank Mr. Reader Burge and the entire Optum Club of Jasper for being our local sponsor. They had to get through some difficult trials this year with some requirements from the state sponsor that they had to follow. So we had to get creative to have a banquet, but we were able to have that at our school. And it was a great night for our school and for these students and these teachers and their families. So I know we're missing some of the students and teachers this evening, but I want to call the names of each one and have them come forward and give it a chance to have a picture made with the board. So each student, we'll call your name. Please step up and with the teacher you chose, if the teacher's here. And let's hold our applause till we get everybody up here, and then we'll recognize them all. So our star student was Brett Minard, and his teacher was Ms. Christine Westbrook. I'm not sure Brett's out there, but I think he had an obligation. But he was our star student, and then there's nine finalists in no particular order. Ms. Heather Vincent was our next star finalist, and she chose Ms. Leslie Zideman as her teacher. Then Mr. Carmel Serbin, and he chose Mr. Ted Estes as his star teacher. Ms. Brooke Bell, and she chose Ms. Angela Quarles as her star teacher. Ms. Rose Finney, and she chose Mr. Will Nix as her star teacher. Mr. Colton Smith, and he chose Ms. Christie Hopgood as his star teacher. Ms. Michelle Pickett, and she chose Dr. Kathy Demute as her star teacher. Ms. Amberly Clark, and she chose Ms. Sarah Harbin as her star teacher. Ms. Cassidy Wyman, and she chose Ms. Suzette Herman as her star teacher. And lastly, Ms. Michaela Pickett, and she chose Mr. Robbie Cheeto as her star teacher. I know it's a busy time of year, and we're missing some folks, but this is quite an honor, and it's something that I'm proud we get to recognize each and every year for their accomplishment. So let's give all these folks a round of applause for their work. The next presentation I'm honored to make this evening is to recognize our Class of 2021 Valedictorian and Salutatorian for Pickens High School. These high honors are earned by two extremely intelligent young ladies who have worked very hard. This distinction of being named first and second-ranked academic students in each graduating class is to be commended. I greatly appreciate and respect the time, efforts, and energy that they have invested into their educational journeys. First, I want to recognize and introduce Class of 2021 Salutatorian, Ms. Brooke Bell. Brooke is the son of Daniel and Christie Bell, and Brooke's plans after high school include attending University of Georgia, where she plans to major in criminal justice and then head to law school. Next, I would like to introduce the Class of 2021 Valedictorian, Ms. Heather Vincent. Heather is the son of David and Shelley Vincent. Heather's plans after high school include attending Georgia College and State University and majoring in biology. I just also want to say, write this down, but these two young ladies are just a sampling of some of the great students we have. But I want to tell you, not only are they smart, they're also very involved in our school, and they are leaders in our school, and they're model citizens. So thank you, ladies, for what y'all done in your career at Pickens High School, and I'm very proud of you, and I appreciate everything you guys have poured into our school over the last four years. So best of luck. You know where we're at if you need us in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wallace is going to...
Thank you for having us tonight. This is an exciting day for HOSA. You know, we were thinking this year that we were going to do whatever we could to get through the pandemic. And that's something that's really important when you're, you know, talking about having high school students, future health professionals, doing something great. So I got together with the team, and I said, "Let's do it." And, you know, if you're looking at these three young people here, this is excellence. So just to let you know. I have one that's missing tonight because she has AP tests tomorrow. I'm a little nervous. Why didn't you tell me? I was coming to talk. But we wanted to let you know, we saved approximately 558 lives this year. As a small group, I think the most important thing is that we beat Lambert, HOSA, and I tell you that because they have 600 members. We have 30. So that's a big deal. We believe in quality over quantity, and because of that, well, we're the grand prize winners. That's a big deal. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wallace is going to be back up here with us. He's going to introduce Emma Long, our state FFA president.
Thank you. I promise this is the last time I'll be up here tonight, but this never gets old, recognizing our kids. I'll just be honest with you, it's one of my favorite events to get to brag on how awesome our student body is and some of the things they've accomplished, get to share them with you tonight. So the last recognition I have for this evening is to honor some very special achievements of another student from the Class of 2021. Pickens County is proud to be home to the state FFA president for the state of Georgia for the 2021 school year. This young lady is also a National Talent Winner in FFA and a National Champion in Skills USA. Those are just a couple highlights of what has been an extraordinary career at our school. In addition to the many accolades that she has accumulated during her last four years, I can tell you that she is a model student. She has poured a lot into our school, a lot into our community, and a lot into this organization that she represents. She will be continuing her educational journey at Oklahoma State University located in Stillwater, Oklahoma, on an agricultural scholarship. Tonight, I want to officially present her with her state of Georgia FFA jacket, as you see here. It will be displayed in our school, and it will hang there just as long as the school's there. So just want to say thank you, Emma Long. Want to say thank you to Emma's parents and all the members of the FFA, especially advisors, who have pushed her along. And please help me welcome her up for some pictures and acknowledgement of this great achievement. Ms. Emma Long, state FFA president.
Any FFA instructors we have here, advisors, anybody who's involved in FFA, please come up and share this moment with Emma. Yeah, that's it. Right, congratulations. It might be nice to have a picture with her parents.
Correct. That was the one.
You don't think so? You were part of the team, Dad. And Mom. I didn't see you sitting over there.
If y'all don't mind, just right before I sit down, I do have a plaque that I'd like to present on behalf of the Georgia FFA Association to Mr. Wallace for the school. So if he's still standing here. So on behalf of the Georgia FFA Association, in a normal year, we would do this onstage in front of thousands of Georgia FFA members, but this year with the limited conditions and stuff because of COVID, we didn't get to do that. So this plaque's for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. All right. Now we're going to hear from Beth Thompson, our Director of Nutrition.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the School Nutrition Department and representing our district. We received an award. It's called the 2020 Vision Award, and I'd just like to share a letter of recognition that we received from the state, and we just got a place to hang ourselves. They won't look at him out, but it's too... At any rate, leaders within the agriculture, education, and public health sectors joined together in December of 2015 to discuss a plan to increase the presence of more nutritious local foods in Georgia's school cafeterias. The Georgia Department of Education's School Nutrition Program and the Georgia Department of Agriculture are celebrating your farm-to-school success with meeting the 2020 vision to include Georgia grown foods in at least 20% of each school meal in Georgia. You are one extraordinary example of a Georgia school nutrition program that is committed to the vision of rigorously serving fresh local foods and working collaboratively with school nutrition professionals and agricultural producers across the state of Georgia. Since March of 2020, Georgia school nutrition programs have served over 187 million school meals to Georgia students. That number would have been a lot higher had COVID not happened. The Georgia Department of Education and the Georgia Department of Agriculture know that school nutrition is a valuable partner in education. The school nutrition program provides three main areas of support: quality meals, student and community engagement, and professional development. Farm-to-school helps integrate these three main areas into school meals that aid in providing coordinated support across the state for higher student achievement. In the 2019-20 school year alone, over $59 million was spent on Georgia grown food served in school meals across our state. The months and years of collaborative efforts between you and of our state agencies have positively impacted our communities and students, and those successes are worth sharing with your entire school community. So congratulations on your success in being named a 2020 Vision District. And this is from Mr. Gary Black, the Georgia Commissioner of Agriculture, Mr. Richard Woods... And this is from Mr. Gary Black, the Georgia Commissioner of Agriculture, Mr. Richard Woods, Georgia City School Superintendent, Misty Freeman, who's the Georgia Farm-to-School Director, and then Dr. Lynette Dodson, who's our Georgia School Nutrition Director. So, I just wanted to share that with everybody. It was a five-year project, and we served well over 20% of our meals, had 20% Georgia grown. Anyway.
Come on over here, Beth, and get your picture with forward.
I look like my mom. I wonder that. With a rock star.
Our just worked a woman in school nutrition.
All right. Now, we're gonna hear from Ms. Gail Smith. She is our director of public relations. Ms. Choke, I believe.
National School Nurse Day was established to foster a better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting. Pickens County School District recognizes the integral role that school nurses play bridging health and education to improve each child's cognitive, physical, social, and emotional development. School nurses champion the whole student every day of the year. But on National School Nurse Day, we take special time to celebrate and recognize the contributions that school nurses are making to the health and learning of our school district's children. School nurses serve as a critical health hub for students, ensuring that students are ready for learning by managing complex chronic conditions, identifying and addressing mental health issues, leveling the field on health disparities, and promoting healthy behaviors, enrolling children in health insurance, and connecting families to healthcare providers, handling medical emergencies, and now navigating through the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, nurses and clinic substitutes, for championing the whole child. You are making a difference in the lives of children every day and leading the way to support health and to ensure students are healthy, safe, and ready to learn. Just a quick note about our clinic substitutes. It is extremely difficult to find caring individuals who are willing to assume the massive responsibility of caring for our students. The three clinic substitutes stand ready to come in and help when called upon. While only one of them is a licensed nurse, all three have received training and had their skills assessed for working in the school clinic. At this time, I'd like to invite all of our school nurses and clinic substitutes who are here with us this evening to come forward, along with our director of Student Health Services, Mrs. Gail Smith. Mrs. Smith is gonna fill you in on a few statistics, and I'm going to give out certificates, so if you'll just come around this direction. Donna Underwood from Tate Elementary, she's not with us this evening. Melissa Fawcett. Kelly Griffin. Tracy Baggett. Michael Slock from Pickens High School, he's also unable to be with us this evening. G C Buffer. Cassie Hill. She's not. She's not here. Lucille Landronette. Did I get it?
You got it.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Gail Smith, the director of Health Services, and I just want to take a moment to say what a fabulous team we have. They have stuff that... They are indeed heroes. And board, we want to thank you and Mr. Young for taking time out of this meeting to recognize the nurses and their hard work. Just a quick snapshot of some of the work that they do, just to give you an idea. Now, COVID has impacted our numbers this year, but the last full year, this is how many office visits the nurses have seen: 42,409. There are 700 children in our school system who have chronic health conditions, serious chronic health conditions, that these nurses manage, such as asthma, allergies, seizures, and diabetes. And medications delivered the last full year was 18,381 medications administered. So, nurses, again, we thank you.
At this time, Ms. Smith has prepared some gifts for you all. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is superintendent reports. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Mr. Green? Deco Restaurant?
I'm sorry, I didn't notice he was coming.
I'll go ahead and introduce, I think I hear Mr. Green on his way. I'll go ahead and introduce Ms. Smith, our CFO, to give our financial update. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Martha's got us ready to go. Our general fund summary, FY21 general fund revenue collected through April 2021 was at 86.37%, and expenditures are at 68.79% of the amended budget. Just always gonna remind you, this time of year, don't get excited about those expenditures being so low, because in the month of June, we actually do three cycles' worth of checks for almost all of our staff. That pays for their June, July, and August pay. It's called summer supplemental pay. So, it is three times the normal monthly amount that will wind up being booked in June as per state regulation. Martha is changing screens. I do want to point out, when you look at the general fund report, the top line, ad war on taxes, we're at a 98.42% collection rate this year. That is fantastic, especially at this time of year. At this point, last year, we were at 95.95. So, I'm very pleased, so the collections are going very well. We appreciate the county's efforts in collecting those taxes for us. FY21 consolidation of funds, which is our new 150 fund, reflects expenditures to date. Because of the timing of the board meeting, we have a process we have to go through at the end of each month. It takes about two weeks, has to go through every principal and federal programs director and myself. So, the transfers are not done. We have to do them monthly after the end of the month. It takes about two weeks to get that done. So, at the time I have to post this, it's always gonna look like it's over budget. It's not. Don't panic. But at the end of the year, this fund will zero out. We'll have revenue in and the transfers out to federal that will make this zero in the end. So, we do still have to present it. We should have some changes coming July 1st. We don't have the documents yet, but the superintendents were told at Bootstrap. Financial people have been told a couple of times. It's coming. We do not have the format yet, but we will be changing format. It will be a required format, so whatever they give us, we'll have to change to that format, and that's what we'll be presenting starting in July. So, as soon as we know what that is, we may go ahead and change to it, just to go ahead. But I'm thinking I may not know till sometime in June. Capital projects. Splosh revenue for the month of April was $617,553.33. Interest earned for the month was $2,703.56. Expenditures totaled $186,687.87, and the month-end splosh balance was $8,763,729.15. As always, I'm gonna report to, we have no debt. Do you have any questions about any of these reports?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our chief operations officer, Mr. Stacy Gilland, will give us our operations and construction updates.
You can't imagine what I've been dealing with this week. Graduation. We're getting everything ready. The stadium's looking good. We painted all the rails and doors and stuff, and cleaned it up good, pressure washed. Now, we're killing wasps and ants and bees and spraying for mosquitoes, because that seems to be a problem in the evenings of the night or two. So, we've got that ready. We're ready to go with graduation. I've tickled with the maintenance department. They've worked so hard. They already know what they gotta do, and they already started before. I said, "Hey, is graduation coming?" "Oh, we've been working on it. Where you been?" So, it's amazing. They know what's going on. In transportation, the Department of Public Safety Motor Carrier Compliance Division did our safety inspections a couple of weeks ago. I'm pleased to report we had no buses put out of service, and no buses were detained for any major problems. Transportation, maintenance department, and shop maintenance do a great job. Our buses are in tip-top shape. They even came and took some training from Tracy and some of the guys to train some of their guys on what to look for on brakes, because some of the new buses have some different systems. So, the state came to Tracy to get some training. So, they really appreciate his abilities and what he does. Food service, Beth talked to you about her award and stuff, but we've got two options for next year, and she's doing some research on it. We can go with the old food service plan like they always have had, or we can do the... It's the single summer option, and she's trying to find out from the state and some other directors what's the best way for us to go and what benefits Pickens County the most. But that's it.
Any updates on any ag facilities, Stacy?
On what?
On the ag facilities.
We will have a final price. I have two for the next board meeting, but they give them permission to go ahead and order the steel now. So, we're rolling on that. You saw the budget, but that's not the price. We're waiting on final bids coming.
Then, we're waiting on the guaranteed maximum.
Guaranteed maximum price.
I understand there was some underground water issues right there.
We're gonna work on getting that off now.
We can see there being a move really soon.
Probably in the next, I hope, within the next two weeks, maybe soon. Because I told them yesterday, talking with him after he gave y'all the estimated price, he was assured me that y'all ready to go ahead. So, I told them, "Go to order the steel and get the grain package started."
Is that on both sides?
No, the other one's still finalized and developed. We still got some more planning on that.
Thank you.
But it's getting there.
The tentative timeline is still beginning this school year.
We hope to have this and open the beginning of the school.
PJ's beginning the next, I mean, high school beginning the next.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't broken down on that until fall. We got a good sign for it. This main thing's getting the plan. We actually even got the scent control system.
I heard you took a lead there.
Yeah. Any questions?
Thank you, Stacy.
All right, our action items. First is the approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports that Ms. Smith presented?
Second.
Second is Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second is Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The personnel action report is approved as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the FY21 budget amendment as presented?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Amy would like to speak to the board before we entertain a motion.
Okay.
I sent information out to all the board members. This is actually a wonderful amendment for us. We have had a multitude of CARES grants awarded to us. We have very specific rules and regulations that go with each one. We have, I will go through the list quickly because I might forget one. We have more coming, too. The CARES, what we're affectionately calling CARES I, CARES II. There is an equity services grant. There's a nursing piece. There's a special ed piece. A multitude of vocational pieces. All of them have very specific rules for their group. The ones that we are presenting tonight, we had added four earlier in the year. Two have been modified. One added $6,000. One, we just needed to change the scope of what we had asked for. These have all been submitted to the state in the consolidated application and already approved. So, now, we need your approval, because they're nowhere in the budget. But we have more coming. This brings the total to, I think, the largest one in this group is $3.1 million, which is the second largest. We have another $7.1 million grant coming in two pieces. These grants can, some of them will end at the end of '22. Then, they have a carryover effect on several that can actually extend these funds out to '24. So, we will be doing CARES for a while. We have a multitude of staff, all the principals, all the department heads asking for what we need, how we've been affected by COVID. Like I said, each grant kind of has, I'll give you an example, like vocational. The state grants got cut back at the first of the year, and y'all may remember that, that we have some ag extended day, ag extended year. CTA extended day involves nine people. Then, we have a supervision. We have youth apprenticeship. Well, they all got cut at the state level. So, the state actually came back later and gave us a little bit more money, and CARES came back up and picked up the rest of the piece. So, this is getting those in there, too. And now, we've been notified, as soon as I finish this report, that we have five more coming. So, I'll be back next month with some more information, and hopefully, we'll have it all processed through for you.
Does office CARES money, do we deal directly with the state or the feds? I know it's federal money, but they went through the state.
The way the federal funds work, US Ed sends it down to each state. We deal with the Georgia Department of Education. We will never deal directly with the feds. The feds just deal with the states. They redeliver to us. The state has the right to withhold some of these grant funds, but as far as I know, they have been sent on through to us, because they have their own at the state-level CARES grants. So, when they refer to CARES I, II, and AR, they got these types of funds, too, for specific things. But we actually have checklists. You have to go through and check a box. Does it fit this category? If it doesn't, you have to go into a plan, an explanation, I mean, a lot of data. Thank goodness, we have a wonderful federal programs director that is helping us. We're a little bit inundated. There's a lot of paperwork, but we're trying to keep it off the schools. That's part of it, is we're trying to take care of it here, so...
The grants that could go out into like 2024, are those, we get the funding upfront, but it runs out '24, or will it be payments that come?
All of these grants work, they're called pull grants. You must submit the budget, get it approved, spend the money, submit a, some of them are monthly reporting. We submit, some are quarterly reportings, where we ask for a draw on the money, and then it takes a week... and then it takes a week to two weeks. There's a very specific, you may have to do the Thursday of this month to get it by the Thursday two weeks later. But it's called a draw grant or a pull grant. So we spend it first, then we get reimbursed. We have already begun, the ones you had already approved, the largest one was 750,000. We've already begun to draw some of those funds. As soon as we get this approval, we're drawing more funds because we, you know, some of it was, like, the bonus grant, the state, it came from the state. Well, that, even though y'all had approved it as a budget, or as for us to pay it, we had not received approval at the state level at a time when we could bring it to you and bring all this. So this is all that we have right now that are up to date. We will have more. The largest one is the ARF grant. Like I said, it's 7.1 million. We'll, at this time, we only have access to about 70%, which is 4.2. We have to come up with a plan and a budget for every penny so we can ask, we can submit a budget and a plan. Then they ask us questions, go back and forth, and when they approve it, then we can start spending that money. So we are really, a lot of that has to do, 20% has to do with learning loss. So you're going to hear a lot from us in budget workshops and things about here are the plans for learning loss, and that's come from the principals. We've, we've met with them, I'm not sure how many times at this point, but, and all the department heads, because you can do things as simple as covering utilities, like power, water, gas, that were, we are doing that in the CARES I budget, CARES II, and if, I think we've got it all covered in two, to get us out three years. So, you know, it does help us with the, call it core continuity of services. You're going to hear a lot from me about some of these things over the next few months, but it is helping. It is very specific in what it's supposed to provide. It was great that it picked up the deficiency we had with the state grants when it came to vocational. Now, if they're giving us money, I can actually give it to them, but there are so many pots and so many different, now I know there's one more coming, and I think it has to be paid out in June, so we get into a kind of a tight turnaround, but it's great to, for them to replace that money. But you're going to, I'll be back. I'll be back doing amendments, too, over the next year or two or three. But it's a great thing, but we still do have to present it. It's all in special revenue. Nothing in general fund changed, nothing in splos changed. This is just the special revenue column. There's a summary I had attached that is everything in special revenue, but the only column that changed is the one that says CARES. But I just wanted you to see where all the totals were coming from, so you knew nothing else was happening with that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's a lot, I think we're up to 12 grants right now, but there are more coming.
I move we approve the budget amendment.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll say.
Mr. Green made the motion, and Mr. Gartrill seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right. Regarding the policy for public participation in board meetings, the request for revision is policy BCBI. Mr. Young, will you give us some information on this request for revision?
I would, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a recommendation to the board tonight to tentatively approve policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings, to align with Georgia statute that's effective July 1, 2021. The policy will remain out for public review until the next scheduled monthly board meeting, at which time board members will take the final vote on the requested revision. This change involves decreasing the time to request to be on the board agenda from five days to 24 hours, and this new policy is based on a recommendation from the Georgia School Board Association and has been vetted by our board attorney. So my recommendation, Madam Chair, is to approve.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the requested revision to policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings, to be placed out for public review until the next scheduled monthly board meeting as presented?
I'll make the motion if we accept it.
Okay. Mr. Gartrill made the motion. Mr. Smith seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion carries unanimously. We have a request to approve two memorandums of understanding, one with the University of Alabama and one with the University of Phoenix. Mr. Young, would you give us a brief description of what these memorandums are?
I would, Madam Chair. My recommendation to the board is that we approve these two MOUs, one with the University of Alabama, the other with the University of Phoenix, which will allow us to place their student teachers in our buildings in the coming year. It's a good opportunity for us to get some recruits in, see how well they perform as student teachers, and possibly pick out some new employees. So I'm asking that the board approve those two MOUs.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve both the MOU with the University of Alabama as well as the MOU with the University of Phoenix as presented?
I'll say.
Pardon me?
I'll say.
Okay. Mr. Green seconded, and who?
Amy.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Mr. Green seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I was a Georgia fan, this is the message, too.
All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. The next action item is the approval of ABM, the First Amendment to Service Agreement. Mr. Young, would you give us some information on this amendment, please?
I would, Madam Chair. My recommendation to the board is for the approval of the contract with ABM for cleaning services for the coming school year. As you know, ABM did a great job for us this year with the deep cleanings that they did without any additional charging, and so they have come back to us for the coming school year with a contract offer that has no increase in it. So my recommendation would be to approve that.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the ABM First Amendment to Service Agreement as presented? All right, Mr. Holland makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say that motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll also ask the superintendent, could reiterate the cost?
Yes, sir.
The difference between keeping that in, or turning that in-house as opposed to contract?
Yes. Stacy, Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, to bring the cleaning back in-house, an initial, the upfront cost would be $600,000 roughly?
Extra.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then 3,000, 300,000 extra moving forward each year.
Per year, yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of DreamBox Learning Software and Services Agreement. Mr. Young, do you have a brief description of this service agreement?
I do, Madam Chair. My recommendation to the board would be the approval of the DreamBox contract, which is a renewal of the program. This is a program that we have been using. Principals K-6 have indicated that they would like for us to renew. I see Ms. Halco shaking her head over there. They would like for us to renew and to continue to use this program in their schools. It's a math program that uses artificial intelligence to tailor the work that the students do with it to their level, and helps to stretch them in their math ability. And our K-6 administrators feel that they've had a tremendous amount of luck with this, and it's an effective program. And the good news is, and there's Amy, the good news is that the funding for the program in the coming year, its renewal will come out of CARES dollars. It qualifies for that.
Total cost is a little over 40,000, right?
Yes. With the training, with the training that comes with it, it's $42,000. Yes, sir. So my recommendation would be its approval.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll say.
All right, thank you. The magic words, the CARES money.
Yes.
Do I, okay, we have the motion from Mr. Green, second from Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a request for board approval of an early release day on the last day of school. Mr. Young, would you explain the reason for this request, please?
Yes, ma'am. I am asking that the board approve a half-day on Friday, next Friday, believe it or not, which is graduation day. This request comes to us from Mr. Wallace and Mr. Gillen, and upon reflection, I realize as someone that has done back parking lot duty at the high school when they dismiss at the end of the day, that dismissal and our staff setting up for graduation would not mix well. Something bad might happen. We also need to get our buses back in from their routes so that we can start using those buses and drivers for our shuttling that's going to occur. So my request of the board is that we change the last Friday of the school year, next Friday, believe it or not, May 21, 2021, to a half-day.
All right. May I have a motion to approve an early release day on May 21, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Gartrill?
And to be clear, this has absolutely no effect on our calendar days or?
It does not. It does not. It will count as a, as a school day.
Mm-hmm. Is there any further discussion? No? All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is a request for board approval of an out-of-state field trip for the Pickens Junior High School Band. Mr. Young, do you or Dr. Flatt have some information on the field trip?
Dr. Flatt, come on in. Madam Chair, I'm asking that the board approve this field trip to Walt Disney World. Be April 3 through April 7, '22, for the year-end student rental workshop. Dr. Flatt can talk to you about the logistics of that, which is a major undertaking.
Hey, good evening. Hey, this is the same trip that Andrew has basically taken the kids on for four years. There's no difference. The information we sent, the, the cost sheet is the most up-to-date one they have to offer. Everything is normal setup, same as it's always been, so it's their normal trip they do every two years. They're wanting to get started as things are fundraising to get the expenses covered to get down there. So beyond that, I don't know about it. They have a good time, though. They love going to do this, so.
Well, it sounds like fun, and I know they'll learn a lot. All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the request for the Pickens Junior High School Band to travel to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida for an overnight field trip, April 3 through 7, 2022?
I'll give it a moment.
Okay. Mr. Holland made that motion. Mr. Smith made the second, seconded motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 15, 2021 call meeting, which was held at 5:00, and the April 15, 2021 regular meeting held at 6:00 PM?
So move.
Okay. Mr. Green and Mr. Gartrill seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, five oh. The next item is approval of surplus. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted by Hill City Elementary, Jasper Middle School Media Center, and the SPED Department? I believe these requests include outdated library books from the schools and broken and outdated items from the Special Education Department. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
I'll say.
Mr. Gartrill seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay. We are down to board comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay.
A couple items before I get to the main remarks I want to make, I feel compelled to make. First, I want to say, I was very encouraged tonight, selfishly I was very encouraged, to see all the good in our system, and there is lots of good. We have so many great students and so many great staff members who, who are exceptional in, in every field, every aspect, and, and it was a great encouragement for me. Second little point I want to make, kind of facility-related or meeting-related, and I just want to publicly make this comment. I brought this concern earlier in the week, and my concerns were kind of proven tonight, and I raised a concern that this room was not going to fit the, the public interest and the, and the community interest, and it was not going to fit all the folks we recognized and their families. The governor has pulled back his orders. There are no limits on, on public gatherings. Our schools are full, our classrooms are full, our stadiums are full. There's no reason our board meetings should not be full. And so going forward, it would be my position that the room be set up appropriately. If, if we feel we need a space out, we need to relocate to where our, the public can, can come in. There's no reason folks have to wait outside or be shuffled in. The, the main reason I feel compelled to speak is I'm going to address the elephant in the room. We've been together twice this week and haven't been brought up amongst us, so hadn't been really even acknowledged, so I, I feel a need to. I, I, like many in the community, was, was very disappointed and discouraged when I saw the conduct demonstrated in those messages that came out a few weeks ago. You know, people can try and spin it or say whatever they want to, you know, point-blank, the conduct in those messages is not how any professional mature adult acts. And it's, it's especially not how people within a position of authority and power and a leadership role acts. Plain and simple. It, it's not. And I, I think what was so, so many thoughts have came through my mind, but, you know, I'm once again reminded that we're the people that are supposed to be setting an example, setting an example to the staff, setting an example to our students. And that's what I kept asking myself so many times, is this the example that we're setting? I certainly hope not. I hope that's not the example we want to set. You know, is this what we want the other staff members, the other administrators in our district to think? This is how you're supposed to behave? That, that you, you talk about your colleagues, that you talk about your supervisors, that you talk about people below you? There's no excuse for it. It's appalling, and, and it's baffling. And what I hate about it is it has put a dark cloud over our district. It's put a dark cloud over our staff who try to come and, and serve our students every day. And it's been a disruption in a time when we don't need disruption. We have enough disruptions every day. This is a time of year where testing's going on, where end-of-year events. This meeting, recognizing the best of the best, was disrupted because of this dark cloud, because of the actions of a few. And so far, maybe one of the saddest parts of it, you all haven't even recognized it. There's been no acknowledgement of it. I mean, we act like nothing took place, like business is normal. And, and, you know, a big part of me wanted, I guess, to go along with that because it's awkward and it's strange, and how do you deal with it? I don't know, it's unprecedented, but that's not right either. I mean, the reality is, we have to move forward. We have kids to teach, we have a system to run, we have people that depend on us. And somehow, we're expected to move forward from here. Somehow, we're expected to conduct business. And I don't, I don't have the answers. I don't know how we do that. Because the reality is, whether people want to acknowledge it or not, the trust and confidence in us, all of us, and the trust and confidence in this district has been eroded. It's been eroded amongst our staff. They feel discouraged, and I don't blame them. I'm discouraged. And, and I don't know how you move forward. I don't know how you build back that trust amongst each other. I don't know how you build back that trust amongst each other. I don't know how you build back the trust with staff. I don't know how you build the trust back with community. I, I, I don't know how we move forward, but it's put us, put us all, those not even engaged, which majority are not, not involved at all, who are trying to do their job or trying to come to school or, or trying to do what's best for their family. And, and it's a hindrance to us all. It's a cloud over all of us. So I, I don't know, I, I don't know the answers. I know that we need to prayers. Pray for all of us. Pray for my colleagues. Pray for me. Pray for our staff who are trying to do their jobs. Pray for our students. Pray that we'll have, have guidance and that people will make the best decision for kids. That's why we're here. We're here to make the best decisions for kids. And unfortunately, kids' interests have taken a backseat. They've taken a backseat because of, of personal interest, because of politics, because of this cloud over all of us, it's taken a backseat. And it's not fair, it's not right. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion if we adjourn, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Mr. Gartrill and Mr. Smith will second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:32 PM.